Good, how are you?
You're gonna know.
That was my first official speaking. And I often do also trigger others because we didn't know. Do you have the... Yeah. Thank you.
Good morning. This hearing of the Committee of Agriculture entitled the next Farm Bill Dairy Policy will come to order. And please join me in a quick prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you, Lord, for the privilege of living in this country and all the blessings that that bestows upon us. Be with us this morning in our deliberations. Please grant us the wisdom and discernment that we need to be able to make hard decisions in the area we work with. Rest in the name of Jesus. Amen. Good morning. This hearing of the Committee of Agriculture entitled the next Farm Bill Dairy Policy will come to order. And please join me in a quick prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, thank you, Lord, for the privilege of living in this country and all the blessings that that bestows upon us. Be with us this morning in our deliberations. Please grant us the wisdom and discernment that we need to be able to make hard decisions in the area we work with. Rest in the name of Jesus. Amen. Good morning. Welcome to today's hearing. You may have noticed something a little different about the room. There's a different portrait in the back at the behest of our ranking member. While we are gathered here today to talk about the dairy policy, I'd be remiss if we did not take a moment to reflect on the fact that we lost a great friend of American agriculture last week. Congressman Kiki Delagarza served every year of his distinguished 37-year career in Congress on this committee. And he spent 14 years from 1981 to 1994 as the helm of the chair, as the chair. As I noted in our release last week, Chairman Delagarza was a true public servant in every sense of the word. From serving our country in the military to representing his constituents back home in Texas and here in the nation's capital, to advocating for farmers and ranchers across the country, he had a significant and lasting impact. I've long admired his commitment to bringing various groups together, all in an effort to build broader support for American agriculture. And frankly, his approach is one that we have strived to emulate today. So today, we take a small test to honor the man and remember his contributions to this great country and the industry that we all love. And before I turn it over to ranking member Peterson, I would note that Mr. Goodlatte, Mr. Lucas, while offering comments, we'll be offering comments as well, add our, any other member wishing to offer tribute to Chairman Delagarza, to please submit their comments for the record. And with that, I turn to the ranking member, Mr. Peterson, for any remarks about Kika that he has.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And when I came to this committee in 1991, Kika had already been chairman for 10 years. And he was the longest, second-longest-serving chairman of the Ag Committee in history. He was elected in 81. When Tom Foley, who had been chairman, moved up to Majority Leader and then eventually Speaker, Kika ran against Ed Jones. This is all ancient history. You may not even know these guys, but, and was elected chairman. The thing I appreciated about Kika was that he was a bottom-up guy. And the subcommittee chairman, back in the days under Kika, had the power of the committee chairman. And they ran the show. And he let them do their thing. And, you know, it worked pretty well. Everybody, the people on the subcommittee had a lot to say about what happened. And they wrote some good farm bills during a time that was very challenging. The 80s, if you remember, was not a good time to be chairman of the Ag Committee or to be Secretary of Agriculture or to be a farmer, right? So Kika had a lot of things that he did. And I'm going to let Frank Lucas talk about the submarine story when he gets to his time. And I won't go into that now. But the other thing is Chip Conley was the economist for many, many years. And they had this chart. And this was before Kent Conrad made charts famous over in the Senate. So Kika had this chart that Chip had made up that showed that the, how much the ag budget was in relation to the rest of the budget. You know, and he put that line on there, and you couldn't even see it, you know? So he would show that chart all over the place, you know, all over the hill, over, and we traveled to other countries, he would show it to people. Whatever. That was one of the things I remember a lot about Kika.
I may need to redo that.
Yeah, it was a good chart, you know? So, you know, and he, as I said, went through some tough times, and he fought off, you know, people that were out to get production agriculture, including your good friend, Mr. Dick Army from Texas, and others. Yeah, and, you know, he, but the bottom line, he was the consummate gentleman, you know? He treated everybody with respect. He ran the committee in a very judicious way. And the bottom line, what Kika cared about was the producers. You know, he kind of listened to everybody, but at the end of the day, that's who we really cared about. And, you know, you could see that in the work that he did. So we, you know, he started this, one of the Hispanic Caucus. He did all kinds of great things while he was here in the House. And he was a pioneer before his time. And so he'll be much missed by myself, I think by anybody that knew him. And he'll be greatly missed by American agriculture and the people of South Texas. So thank you for giving us a chance to talk about him a little bit today.
Well, that's, it says portrait in the back is Kika from San Antonio, South Texas. Mr. Goodlatte, recognize. Comments?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank you and the ranking member for being inspired to remember former Chairman Delagarza. His final two years as chairman of this committee were my first two years in the Congress. And I remember early on in my experience here, in the dead of winter, taking us all up to Rhode Island, to Newport, Rhode Island, an unusual place for an agriculture retreat in the middle of the winter for an ag retreat that was beneficial. It got us all together, and we discussed a number of issues. And the ranking member is correct when he says that he gave his subcommittee chairman some latitude. Sometimes they exceeded the authority that he gave them. In one case, in that first two years, when he was the chairman and we were in the minority, a hearing was held on a bill that I had, my very first bill in the Congress. And not many people showed up for the hearing that was held on the bill. And the chairman had to leave, and I was the only other person here, subcommittee chairman, I think it was Harold Volkmer, had to leave. So he asked me to take the chair. The word got back to Chairman Delagarza that this was taking place, and he soon appeared to take back over. His portrait that you noted hung in that spot the entire four years that I had the honor to serve as chairman of the committee. And I always loved what former chairman and now Senator Pat Roberts had to say about that painting. Congressman Delagarza was not as tall as that painting might appear. So, he, that's right. Pat Roberts referred to that as the shortest fence post in Texas. But Congressman Delagarza was a great champion for American agriculture, and I enjoyed serving with him, and I'm glad we're remembering here today. Thank you, and I yield back.
Mr. Lucas, recognize.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I too appreciate you and the ranking member for taking time to honor our old colleague. I guess three of us left on the committee who served with him. Mr. Delagarza was strictly old-school. He ran the committee with authority. He conducted himself in a very dignified fashion. And in those days, prior to 1995, we still operated under the proxy system. Remember that, gentlemen? And when I was elected in the special election May of 1994, ranking member Roberts took me in to see the chairman. He said, "Now, this is a very important meeting, and you will be respectful, and you will be understanding, and you will agree to whatever he says." Thank you, Pat. So we go in, and Mr. Delagarza quizzes me a little bit about the district, and was I indeed taking my predecessor's place? And he looks me in the eye and says, "Have you signed my proxy form yet?" And I looked at Pat, and Pat went, "Absolutely, Mr. Chairman." Which was, the proxies went to the party member on each side that was in leadership. But the thing that I think Delagarza may well be remembered the most for, and you can always tell a member or a staffer or a person who's been in this crowd for any period of time, that Mr. Delagarza had something that we all referred to as the submarine story. Kika had been in the Navy years earlier. And Kika liked to tell the story that when he became chairman of the Ag Committee, he had an opportunity to go and tour a nuclear submarine out at sea. And that in the course of, as an old, I believe, ensign, he was quizzing the captain of the boat about all the things that it would do and all the incredible stuff. And the captain kept saying, "Congressman, that's classified. Congressman, that's classified. We can't discuss all of these various things." And finally, Kika, in his story, and I'm paraphrasing rather loosely, Kika looked in the eye and said, "So, let me see now. You've got an atomic submarine, so you've got unlimited power. You can make your water, and you can make your air, and you can stay underwater for years and years at a time." And the captain smiled. And he said, "Well, it would seem to me, therefore, Captain, the one thing that limits this massive weapon's ability to defend the United States of America, the only thing that you can't make onboard is your food supply. So obviously, Captain, the limiting factor on the ability of this powerful nuclear submarine to defend the country and the world's freedom is its ability to feed itself, the food supply. Therefore, what is the most important element in the defense of freedom in the United States and the world? It's the food supply." And if you were in Mr. Delagarza's presence, you would cheer. That was an automatic given. But he was right. And the Ag Committee does defend the freedom of the entire world. With that, Mr. Chairman, I thank you for the opportunity to reminisce about the chairman. And they don't make them quite like that anymore.
I understand. Appreciate that. Other members are requested if they want to make comments in reference to Mr. Delagarza for the official record to put it in. I know Mr. Little was here, but we'll move on with the hearing. Today's hearing continues our marathon series of hearings examining all aspects of the next Farm Bill. As I noted earlier, dairy policy is the focus of today's hearing. Dairy is a unique industry. It's present in all 50 states. Harvest comes seven days a week, 365 days a year, and milk is highly perishable. And it's processed into a range of products. These factors combined with the fact that dairy markets are increasingly globally integrated make crafting an effective dairy policy particularly challenging. While the entire agricultural industry has been experiencing low prices, leading to a 50% drop in net farm income over the past four years, the dairy industry has had, is in an unenviable position. After hitting $24 per 100 weight in 2014, the price of milk fell to $16 per 100 weight in 2016. While we often say that the farm safety net is designed for times like these, the Margin Protection Program in the 2014 Farm Bill has provided virtually no assistance. Underperformance by the MPP has resulted in very few producers purchasing buy-up coverage levels in 2017, leaving producers even more exposed to market volatility. While the industry is to be commended for making the fundamental shift away from farm support to margin protection, that will only be sustainable if MPP actually proves sufficient risk management going forward. In addition to an inadequate safety net, the dairy industry is facing other headwinds here and abroad. While many of our consumers, our customers, are now overseas, with Mexico being the most significant outlet for U.S. dairy exports, the industry has been consistently hampered by barriers to entry into the Canadian markets, including the latest example designed to keep U.S. ultra-filtered milk out of Canada processing facilities, and that's just scratching the surface. While our nation works to tackle nearly $20 trillion in debt, we must remind folks that America's farmers and ranchers have repeatedly answered the call for deficit reduction. In fact, latest estimates put the 2014 farm savings in at just under $100 billion, four times the savings estimated at passage. And while we don't yet know the resources that we'll have available to craft the next Farm Bill, we do know that Americans, farmers, and ranchers feel like they've given it the office, as they say. As we work through the tough decisions of how to allocate available resources, it's important that we have a very clear picture of what is and is not working. To that end, I look forward to hearing from our witnesses today about their vision for the next Farm Bill and discussing other issues of importance to the dairy industry. With that, I turn to Mr. Peterson for any comments he'd like to make.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thanks for holding this hearing. You know, the Margin Protection Program we spent a lot of time on in the last Farm Bill, working with National Milk Producers and others to come up with a new system. The MILC program had been around for a while, and it, you know, it paid out some payments to producers, but it did not, it wasn't really a safety net. And the year that we got clobbered in 2009, we got payments, but it did not go anywhere near what we needed to do to alleviate the problem. And we had a lot of producers go out of business, and it was a terrible, terrible situation. So because of that, we went to work and come up with a new idea, and that was the Margin Protection Program, that we would have an insurance program that would float off of feed cost. The USDA has been calculating feed costs for years, and so it would be a margin above that feed cost, and we'd allow people to buy protection against that margin. And so we put it together with long hearing, long meetings with National Milk, and Jerry Kozak hardly had any hair left by the time it was done. But they finally came to a resolution, and that was introduced and became part of the bill. We did have a fight over this so-called stabilization fund. And myself and the Speaker got into it over that, and it was quite a fight that went on there for a year. And at the end, the Speaker won. Surprise, surprise. And we were concerned at the time that we had set the sweet spot at $6.50 above feed cost. So that the most affordable rate was that amount. And you got above that, you could buy up to $8, but it's pretty expensive. We were concerned that this might be too good, and that we'd take too much risk out of the system, and there'd be too, you know, overproduction, and so we wanted the stabilization fund. Well, that disappeared. And it turned out, we shouldn't have had a fight over that because it wasn't even remotely necessary, because it was not needed at all. In fact, what happened is CBO, who is still, is having a very difficult time, in my opinion, scoring dairy, they came in with a score that I didn't agree with, and they forced us to take a reduction in the feed cost indicator at the last minute. And because of that, there was only one month that, since the bill has been in effect, there's only one month that actually paid out because of this new feed cost indicator. If we'd have had the original feed cost indicator, we might have had, well, these were two months, so we might have had four or five times it might have paid out, depending on what your level of coverage was. So, one of the, so what happened is hardly anybody has signed up for this because they signed up the first year, they got burned and didn't get anything out of it. And it's, you know, you look at the future price, and look at what you have to pay, and look at what the situation is with this feed cost, they're not buying it. So now, we got, basically got people sitting out there with no protection when things collapse, and they will collapse at some point. So one of the things that, you know, you hear from the industry today is that they want to go back to the original feed cost indicator, which was in there at the start, would solve a lot of this problem. I think we also have to look at the, what we charge the small guys for buy-up so that they have better protection. And the problem is that this is going to cost money. So we've had the CBO score this, you know, so these are not the overall package, but the feed cost indicator, the original score they gave us is over $2 billion, which I don't know where we're going to find that. You know, if we'd had it in the original bill, we'd have it in the baseline. You know, they wouldn't have forced us to take it out. So the point is, I don't see how they can come with a score of $2.2 billion when I got sheets here that show that isn't going to, that's not going to be remotely close to what it's going to be. This year, there's not going to be any payments at all. They're already showing $17-some-dollar milk. So I don't know how in the heck they're doing this. So we're going to have to do some work with them to try to get this back into reality. But the bottom line is, it's the right idea. The Margin Protection Program is the right idea. We just have to get it tweaked so that it works, especially for the small guys. I'm not sure the big guys want it and need it that much. As long as they have catastrophic, that's the main thing that they want. So, you know, we need to tweak this thing. And hopefully, we can come up with a way to get this done, we can get CBO, you know, within the range of reality and be successful. So, thank you.
I think the chairman and chair request other members to submit their opening statements for the record so that witnesses may begin their testimony and to ensure there's ample time for questions. I'd like to welcome to our witness table today Jim Mulhern, President/CEO National Milk Producers Federation here in Arlington, Virginia, and Mr. Michael Dykes, President/CEO International Dairy Food Association in Washington, D.C. Mr. Mulhern, you're recognized for five minutes when you're ready.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Excuse me. Let me start by commending both your opening comments. Frankly, the statements you have laid out well capture the point of view expressed in my written statement. I have submitted a written statement for the record that goes into a number of issues. I'll confine my comments this morning to our views on the Margin Protection Program. If I could take just a second to just mention, it's poignant for me to be here this morning as you honor Chairman Delagarza. My first Farm Bill goes back to 1985, working on dairy policy back then. It was a very troubling time. And the comments from Mr. Chairman, Mr. Peterson, Mr. Goodlatte, Mr. Lucas honoring the chairman are quite apt. He was a great leader. He leaves a great legacy for American agriculture, and we're all better with our farm policy because of the leadership that he provided. In terms of where we're at with the situation facing dairy producers today, we continue to be on the challenging roller coaster ride that we face for the last more than 15 years. And we're once again in a downward slump in our industry. While 2014, as you said, Mr. Chairman, was a very good year for dairy, the two years since then have been very challenging for many, many dairy farmers across the country. And in just the past two weeks, the outlook for milk prices and margins has deteriorated again at an unusually rapid pace. Looking to future policy needs, I want to commend the comments, Mr. Chairman, you and Mr. Peterson, in your letter earlier this month to the Budget Committee, where you laid it out clearly that the challenge before the committee and before the Congress is first establishing what policies are required to effectively address the conditions in farm and ranch country, and then establish what resources will be required to achieve them. Mr. Peterson, your comments on the CBO situation is apt. That's the situation we faced. The reality is, we have a dairy program today that is an ineffective safety net. And I'll talk a little bit about that in my comments. The bottom line is, we have a program today that is a program in name but not in effect. And we need to address that in this upcoming Farm Bill. It's because the opposite approach to what you've outlined in your letter was what we ended up pursuing in the 2014 Farm Bill, that we find ourselves today with a program that's not working. It's really been one that, as I said, doesn't provide an effective safety net for our dairy industry. Over the course of the last 18 months, we've been examining potential improvements in the program. And I'm pleased to present to the committee today our recommendations for changes in MPP that will make it the effective safety net that we've been looking for. The first area we must address to make MPP effective is to address the feed cost calculation in that margin formula. And Mr. Peterson, you spoke to that in your comments. The current formula is failing because of changes that were made during the deliberations in the 2014 Farm Bill. And it's, the issue is that we developed the original formula to capture accurate feed cost on dairy farms, working with dairy science experts on the types of feed, the volumes of feed needed to produce 100 weight of milk. And in the course of the discussions in the Farm Bill, due to deficit reduction reasons, that formula that we had proposed, and Mr. Peterson, that you had in your original legislation, that formula was changed. You got the calculation right the first time, Mr. Peterson. The major change we have to do is go back to that. If we do that, we'll have an effective program. The second aspect of MPP in need of revision are the payment rates. And I'm specifically talking about the rates for supplemental coverage. While the feed cost reforms that are outlined in my testimony are essential to reflecting true producer costs, in order to have an effective program, farmers must be able to afford the coverage. And adjusting those premium rates, especially the rates at the lower levels of milk production, will help ensure that MPP provides the safety net coverage that we need for our industry. A third area of improvement that we're recommending relates to some technical changes designed to make the program more responsive to producers. The first one would be to change from this two-month tranche that we have currently for calculation of the margin. Right now, it's a January, February, March, April, May, June, June, July, two months averaging, which doesn't really reflect what's happening on a monthly basis on dairy operations. We need to go back to an annual monthly calculation of that. And the other change in this area would be to move the sign-up date for the program back toward the end of the calendar year preceding the year for which you're signing up. It's in the law, it's set up a little bit earlier. We've asked USDA the past three years to move that date back. They've done so, and that's been...
Calculating feed costs for years, and so it would be a margin above that feed cost, and we'd allow people to buy protection against that margin. And so we put it together with long hearing, long meetings with National Milk, and Jerry Kozak hardly had any hair left by the time it was done. But they finally came to a resolution, and that was introduced and became part of the bill. We did have a fight over this so-called stabilization fund, and myself and the Speaker got into it over that, and it was quite a fight that went on there for a year. And at the end, the Speaker won, surprise, surprise. And we were concerned at the time that we had set the sweet spot at $6.50 above feed cost, so that the most affordable rate was that amount. You got above that, you could buy up to $8, but it's pretty expensive. We were concerned that this might be too good, and that we'd take too much risk out of the system, and there'd be too, you know, overproduction, and so we wanted the stabilization fund. Well, that disappeared. And it turned out, we shouldn't have had a fight over that because it wasn't even remotely necessary, because it was not needed at all. In fact, what happened is, CBO, who is still, is having a very difficult time, in my opinion, scoring dairy, they came in with a score that I didn't agree with, and they forced us to take a reduction in the feed cost indicator at the last minute. And because of that, there was only one month that since the bill has been in effect, there's only one month that actually paid out because of this new feed cost indicator. If we'd have had the original feed cost indicator, we might have had, well, these were two months, so we might have had four or five times it might have paid out, depending on what your level of coverage was. So, one of the, so what happened is hardly anybody has signed up for this, because they signed up the first year, they got burned and didn't get anything out of it, and it's, you know, you look at the future price, and look at what you have to pay, and look at what the situation is with this feed cost, they're not buying it. So now we got, basically got people sitting out there with no protection when things collapse, and they will collapse at some point. So, one of the things that, you know, heal from the industry today is that they want to go back to the original feed cost indicator, which was in there at the start, would solve a lot of this problem. I think we also have to look at the, what we charge the small guys for buy-up, so that they have better protection. And the problem is that this is going to cost money. So, we've had the CBO score this, you know, so these are not the overall package, but the feed cost indicator, the original score they gave us is over $2 billion, which I don't know where we're going to find that. You know, if we'd had it in the original bill, we'd have it in the baseline, you know, they wouldn't have forced us to take it out. So the point is, I don't see how they can come with a score of 2.2 billion, when I got sheets here that show that isn't going to, that's not going to be remotely close to what it's going to be. This year, there's not going to be any payments at all. They're already showing 17-something dollar milk. So I don't know how in the heck they're doing this. So, we're going to have to do some work with them to try to get this back into reality. But the bottom line is, it's the right idea. The Margin Protection Program is the right idea. We just have to get it tweaked so that it works, especially for the small guys. I'm not sure the big guys want it and need it that much. As long as they have catastrophic, that's the main thing that they want. So, you know, we need to tweak this thing, and hopefully we can come up with a way to get this done, we can get CBO, you know, within the range of reality and be successful. So, thank you.
I think, gentlemen, Chair, I request other members submit their opening statements for the record, so that witnesses may begin their testimony, and to ensure there's ample time for questions. I'd like to welcome to our witness table today Jim Mulhern, President, CEO, National Milk Producers Federation, here in Arlington, Virginia, and Mr. Michael Dykes, President, CEO, International Dairy Food Association, Washington, DC. Mr. Mulhern, you're recognized for five minutes when you're ready.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Hey, excuse me, let me start by commending both your opening comments. Frankly, the statements you have laid out well capture the point of view expressed in my written statement. I have submitted a written statement for the record that goes into a number of issues. I'll confine my comments this morning to our views on the Margin Protection Program. If I could take just a second to just mention, it's poignant for me to be here this morning as you honor Chairman De La Garza. My first farm bill goes back to 1985, working on dairy policy back then. It was a very troubling time, and the comments from Mr. Chairman, Mr. Peterson, Mr. Goodlatte, Mr. Lucas honoring the Chairman are quite apt. He was a great leader, he leaves a great legacy for American agriculture, and we're all better with our farm policy because of the leadership that he provided. In terms of where we're at with the situation facing dairy producers today, we continue to be on the challenging roller coaster ride that we face for the last more than 15 years, and we're once again in a downward slump in our industry. While 2014, as you said, Mr. Chairman, was a very good year for dairy, the two years since then have been very challenging for many, many dairy farmers across the country. And in just the past two weeks, the outlook for milk prices and margins has deteriorated again at an unusually rapid pace. Looking to future policy needs, I want to commend the comments, Mr. Chairman, you and Mr. Peterson, in your letter earlier this month to the Budget Committee, where you laid it out clearly that the challenge before the committee and before the Congress is first establishing what policies are required to effectively address the conditions in farm and ranch country, and then establish what resources will be required to achieve them. Mr. Peterson, your comments on the CBO situation is apt, that's the situation we faced. The reality is, we have a dairy program today that is an ineffective safety net, and I'll talk a little bit about that in my comments. The bottom line is, we have a program today that is a program in name, but not in effect, and we need to address that in this upcoming farm bill. It's because the opposite approach to what you've outlined in your letter was what we ended up pursuing in the 2014 farm bill, that we find ourselves today with a program that's not working. It's really been one that, as I said, doesn't provide an effective safety net for our dairy industry. Over the course of the last 18 months, we've been examining potential improvements in the program, and I'm pleased to present to the committee today our recommendations for changes in MPP that will make it the effective safety net that we've been looking for. The first area must address to make MPP effective is to address the feed cost calculation in that margin formula, and Mr. Peterson, you spoke to that in your comments. The current formula is failing because of changes that were made during the deliberations in the 2014 farm bill. And it's, the issue is that we developed the original formula to capture accurate feed cost on dairy farms, working with dairy science experts on the types of feed, the volumes of feed needed to produce 100 weight of milk. And in the course of the discussions in the farm bill, due to deficit reduction reasons, that formula that we had proposed, and Mr. Peterson, that you had in your original legislation, that formula was changed. You got the calculation right the first time, Mr. Peterson. The major change we have to do is go back to that. If we do that, we'll have an effective program. The second aspect of MPP in need of revision are the payment rates. And I'm specifically talking about the rates for supplemental coverage. While the feed cost reforms that are outlined in my testimony are essential to reflecting true producer costs, in order to have an effective program, farmers must be able to afford the coverage. And adjusting those premium rates, especially the rates at the lower levels of milk production, will help ensure that MPP provides the safety net coverage that we need for our industry. A third area of improvement that we're recommending relates to some technical changes designed to make the program more responsive to producers. The first one would be to change from this two-month tranche that we have currently for calculation of the margin. Right now, it's a January, February, March, April, May, June, June, July, two months averaging, which doesn't really reflect what's happening on a monthly basis on dairy operations. We need to go back to an annual monthly calculation of that. And the other change in this area would be to move the sign-up date for the program back toward the end of the calendar year preceding the year for which you're signing up. It's in the law, it's set up a little bit earlier. We've asked USDA the past three years to move that date back. They've done so, and that's been helpful in getting producers making more informed decisions for the program. Finally, we urge the committee to make changes on the livestock gross margin program. More risk management is better for farmers than less, and my testimony goes into some detail on changes in LGM. In the interest of time, I will not go into that in my oral statement, but happy to discuss it in questions. In sum, Mr. Chairman, if we make these changes for broad areas in the MPP program, we think those changes will have the desired effect and make MPP the effective dairy program for the future that was envisioned in 2014. We're not quite there, but it won't be, it's not a lot to do to make it work for us in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mulhern, Mr. Dykes, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Ranking Member Peterson, and members of the committee. Pleased to be here today. The recognition for Chairman De La Garza brings back memories for me as well. I wasn't here in Washington, DC in the eighties. I was a practicing dairy veterinarian during the TOM, and we experienced some gut-wrenching financial times during that era. The late eighties were tough for everyone, and I remember those very vividly today. We saw foreclosures, we saw strife in agriculture that was quite significant. So, vivid memories for me of the late eighties as well. Thank you for all holding this hearing today. I'm honored to be here. I appreciate the challenges facing this committee as you begin to draft a new farm bill, and you're doing that under very different economic circumstances than you did in the last farm bill. I grew up on a dairy farm, and having been a practicing dairy veterinarian, I've always had a special interest in dairy policy. IDFA is a national trade organization representing $125 billion a year manufacturing and marketing industry with 525 members. We are part of the U.S. food and grocery manufacturing industries, which employs nearly 2 million people, 2 million American jobs. Our companies market and retail milk, dairy products, yogurt, cheese, ice cream, infant formula, many other products. As this committee begins to consider the next farm bill, the dairy industry needs better mechanisms for risk management, and that's on both the farmer's side, as you just heard Jim explain, and on the processor's side as well. Farmers are now looking to improve the Margin Protection Program and the Livestock Gross Margin Insurance Program to provide them with some access to effective risk management tools in this farm bill. We're looking at those studies, we're studying those proposals, and we are supportive of fine-tuning the farmer's safety net so that it functions effectively for farmers and is not market-distorting. At the same time, we would ask that the 2018 farm bill provide better risk management tools for processors to manage price volatility through the extension and expansion of the current forward contracting program, which includes all dairy products except fluid milk at this TOM. Forward contracting is a provided important mechanism for manufacturers to directly contract with individual farmers or their cooperatives at a fixed price to reduce price volatility. We believe this program should now be made permanent, and the same opportunity should be afforded to fluid milk manufacturers so that they too can help manage price volatility in the marketplace. We intend to work with National Milk to develop a consensus proposal, and my hope is that we can work collaboratively to find a solution. We pledge to keep this committee apprised of our progress. I would also like to briefly mention five additional policy areas that we're looking to you for support. Number one, we watch closely the success of the SNAP pilots authorized in the '08 and the '14 farm bill to increase fruit and vegetable purchases. We believe adding voluntary incentives to SNAP participants to increase their consumption of milk and dairy foods would be nutritionally sound and a wise use of taxpayer dollars. We request that the Food insecurity Nutrition Incentive Program be reauthorized and expanded to include milk and dairy foods in the next farm bill. Number two, milk is not only under-consumed in all U.S. households, but also in schools. We've seen six straight years of declining school milk consumption, even as overall school enrollment has increased. We are actively working with the National Milk and the subcommittee Chairman Thompson to lift the restrictions and expand the options on the types of milk offered in school cafeterias. We believe these changes to SNAP and school milk programs are important, given that nine out of every 10 Americans are not consuming the recommended three servings of dairy a day according to the 2015 dietary guidelines. Number three, IDFA and the entire food and beverage industry recently asked Secretary Price to extend the compliance deadline from July 2018 to May of 2021 for FDA's new nutrition facts and serving size rules. Without the extension from FDA, our companies may redesign all product labels by next year, only to learn they must do it all over again to comply with USDA's GMO labeling requirements, which are on a different compliance schedule. Number four, dairy foods represent the second-largest and fastest-growing category of organic foods, totaling $6 billion or 15% of all organic sales. We believe maintaining the National Organic Program as it is currently managed will ensure that consumers have access to organic dairy products and accommodates continued growth over the organic dairy industry. Number five, exports are driving growth in demand for U.S. farm milk, and we are well-positioned to achieve even more growth. We have industry and regulatory standards to assure consumers that our products are safe, we have the technology to innovate, and we have the infrastructure to deliver the products to our consumers. Mexico is the number-one export market for U.S. dairy, accounting for 1/4 of our total dairy exports. We need to ensure that a renegotiation of NAFTA preserves this important market. Recent Canadian efforts to prevent U.S. exports of ultra-filtered milk from Wisconsin and New York will cost our industry approximately $150 million. We need to address this issue immediately and obtain increased market access for dairy in Canada. Finally, the Asia-Pacific region is the world's largest market for food and agriculture and is expected to double by 2050. Reducing and eliminating tariffs and other restrictive agriculture policies in this region will allow our dairy industry to compete. Mr. Chairman, there's a common thread to all the issues that I've raised here today, and that is enhancing the demand for U.S. dairy products. With the proper tools and proper policies, such as expanding the options of the type of milk offered in school cafeterias, obtaining greater market access in Canada and opening new markets in Asia, maintaining our top export market in Mexico, offering more dairy foods through SNAP, and providing better mechanisms for risk management for both farmers and processors, I'm confident our industry will meet and increase the demand for milk and dairy products and provide economic prosperity and stability to American dairy companies, American dairy farmers, their communities throughout the country. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and members of the committee, for the opportunity to testify today. I look forward to answering your questions.
Well, thank you, gentlemen. Chair, I would remind members that we'll be recognized for questioning in order of seniority for members who were here at the start of the hearing. After that, members will be recognized at order of arrival. I appreciate the members' understanding, and I recognize myself for five minutes. Thank you both for being here, appreciate it. It's pretty clear that the MPP program didn't work as intended, and we're going to work to try to fix that. I'm hard-pressed to understand how the 10% increase in the feed cost would trigger a $2 billion score. Maybe the math is fuzzy, but that would seem to say the overall program would cost $20 billion, and I don't think that's the case either. So we're continuing to work with USDA. I am concerned that expectations within the dairy industry, looking at that number, will be hurt if we don't come in near that, and that's not rational, to be able to add that kind of resources to the program. So, Colin and I are committed to finding the solution, but I don't want your members and the producers out there to feel like we didn't do our job because we couldn't deliver on that number. I don't think that number's right, but we're going to work to get this fixed, but I don't want misplaced expectations among your teams that that's the fix, and we're going to work on it and committed to making that happen. Jim, with that, talk to us a little bit about the differential between MPP as it applies to small herds versus larger producers. I think in your testimony, you said we've had a significant drop in dairies since 2006. Can you walk us through how you think MPP could be used to slow that down or stop it, or should we slow that down and stop it, those kind of comments? But walk me through the differential between the two sized farm versus MPP.
Sure, Mr. Chairman. One of the beauties of MPP, I think, is the differential rates that were set up in terms of the coverage below the first 4 million pounds of production, which is about 175, 180 cow herd, and production above 4 million pounds. And all farms get the rate on the first 4 million and a higher rate for higher levels of coverage. MPP can be especially effective in protecting smaller farms because of the rate differential and the ability to, if it's affordable, to get higher levels of coverage, and that really is the key. The rates for $7.50, $8 coverage, which frankly, you know, some of our small farms probably need coverage at that level, today it's too expensive, so we need to address those rates so they can buy up higher levels of coverage. Mr. Peterson was right in his comments, it's the same feedback we've gotten from our members, our larger members. They want to make sure they have the MPP as a catastrophic safety net. If we go through another 2009 situation, those situations that are completely out of our control, they want to know that we've got a floor under that price. It was devastating to go through that in 2009. 2012 was another bad year for our industry. But the beauty of MPP is it does have the ability to provide, to provide support, safety net support for all-size operations, and by having the ability to have higher rates of coverage for the smaller operations, that will actually provide budget protection, Mr. Chairman. It won't be as high of cost if we do that.
All right. Is the 4 million pounds an appropriate cut for, between the two? Should we raise that, lower that? Is that, is that, is that, the industry, okay with that economics associated with herds smaller than that, or whatever?
Yeah, it's an issue that we've looked at and had discussion, but our members are satisfied with it with the current 4 million pound threshold level. You know, there have been discussions, and there were some back in the last farm bill debate of having, you know, three levels of coverage. We think we netted out pretty well on the 4 million pound above and below. That's worked well. We have not had a lot of concern from our membership about raising that. And of course, that goes to the point, Mr. Chairman, if you adjust that, it does have budget implications, and that's what we were trying to guard against that. I want to be clear in our presentation, the dairy industry, dairy producers of America do not want a costly program. You know, we've been back in the days, and when Kika De La Garza was Chairman of this committee back in 1985, we had a, not a $2 billion cost to the program over a 10-year score, we had a $2 billion cost to the dairy program in one year, and that's not helpful. We've gotten away from that. We want this program to be a safety net and not to generate excess production. That was one of the reasons we had the battle we had in the last farm bill. There was concern, the whole battle over market stabilization was our industry's desire not to have too much milk coming on. The lesson we've seen is this program is not going to do that. It is, it can be an effective safety net if it's adjusted.
Yeah. Quickly, Michael, what's the scientific reason why Canada would refuse to take ultra-filtered milk?
I don't think they've given a scientific reason, sir. I think they're advantaging their own in-country processors to use their skilled milk products for cheese production there rather than taking our ultra-filtered milk from the U.S.
Okay. With that, I'll yield to Mr. Peterson for five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Mulhern, have you had discussions with CBO about these scores at all?
No, I've not had discussions with CBO about them.
Well, I have, and I've put together a chart here that's got a month-by-month breakdown of what months, you know, what the margin was, and I've done it based on what the current law is and what it was originally. And there's only one month since the bill has gone into effect that we've had a payment, and part of the reason we don't have participation. So, it just, so this year, we're not going to need it, right? $17 and something they're projecting for milk. So, I don't, I just don't get it, you know, how they're coming up with this score, you know? So one of the things that I've done is I've asked Langley over at CBO to give me a month-by-month printout of how he came up with this. I'd like to see what months he's saying it's going to cost this much money that we're going to come up to $2 billion. So whatever you guys can do to help him, you know, I've got Scott Brown working with him, you know, and I think we're making some progress, but this thing is way out of line, you know, and having dealt with CBO 2008, when I was Chairman, you know, it's a big problem. And if you don't get them to move, you know, I don't see how we're going to be able to do what needs to be done on the feed cost unless we get them to bring it into reality. On the other hand, you know, we've had the score on the small producers of the 4 million pounds, and that's, I think, in the range, you know, go to 7.50 at the current 9 cents, which is what it is for 6.50. To go to that level, we're talking, I think, $150 million over 10 years. So it's not a huge amount of money to get the small producers better coverage, which is, I think, we need to do. We're going to get participation. And what I've been concerned about all along is that we're going to have a, when we allow them to sign up month by month, year by year, we're going to have a situation one year where they are projected to have some kind of a price, and it turns out wrong, and we have a collapse, and they don't have any coverage, you know, because they've, you know, are not responding to the system. So, so I, at a minimum, I think we've got to get that done, you know, and go to the monthly coverage is, is only 21 million to get for over 10 years to go to monthly coverage. But, you know, the feed cost, I think you guys are right. I think what we had in the bill originally was right, but, you know, we've got some education to do. So I don't know if you have any other ideas about what we can do to get them to the right numbers here, but...
Well, I would say, Mr. Peterson, having some now-white hair, it used to be, remember the days when, back in the '85 farm bill, when it was blonde? I've been dealing with CBO budget scores on dairy for a long, long time, and I've often seen them to be inaccurate, and I, frankly, it's a challenge, I think, to score these programs, this industry, because of the dynamic nature of it, it has been challenging. The stochastic model that they use in this scoring, I think, is a bit of a problem. It's a probability model, so they take all kinds of permutations, my understanding, and weigh those, and come up with a best guess, if you will. I rarely seem to be very accurate in their scoring, and I think the experience we've had these last two years, where what the, what the MPP was scored at when it came out of the Congress, scored for FY '16 and '17, and what we've experienced, far off. And the fact is, in the first year of operation, the first full year, the federal government made money on the MPP. Dairy farmers paid $70 million into the Federal Treasury for coverage, and the program paid out less than $1 million, $730,000, I think, was the payment out. Last year, because people had that bad experience the first year, people dropped, a lot of people dropped down just to the catastrophic coverage, paid the $100 administrative fee, did not buy supplemental coverage, so the fees collected dropped from 70 million to 20 million, and as you pointed out in your comments, there was a two-month period last year where USDA paid only to those producers who bought the higher level of coverage, which wasn't very many producers. So it is a problem, the scoring is a challenge. It's one thing that we'd like to continue working with you and the committee to come up with more realistic and accurate budget projections.
Thank you, and we do, as you said earlier, we do have parts of the country that have too much milk right now, as you know. But, Mr. Dykes, I just want to say, for my constituents and me, that we want whole milk in the school, okay?
We would appreciate that.
All right.
And I think Jim would as well.
We're right there with you.
Jim, your time expired. Mr. Goodlatte, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I want to second that motion from the ranking member with regard to the options that should be available in our schools.
Is that unanimous?
I'd also, Mr. Mulhern, I'd like to follow up on the gentleman from Minnesota's questions about the MPP premium rates. In your testimony, you discuss adjustment to those rates and your concerns regarding feed factor calculations. If feed factors were set at the original level that you mentioned in your testimony, I'm curious about your opinion as to whether the cost of the program's premiums would be viewed as affordable or manageable by dairy farmers.
That's a very good question, Mr. Goodlatte. I would say that the rates under 4 million pounds clearly need to be adjusted, because even if we fix the feed calculation, it's going to be difficult for that, to buy coverage for that first 4 million pounds at the current rates. Our experience the first two years has been that smaller operations have a higher cost to production, they need a little bit higher level of coverage there, so adjusting those rates would be prudent to encourage more producer participation in the program, to provide the safety net that it was designed to do. Above 4 million pounds, we want to look at those rates. We didn't propose specific rates because it's something we want to keep looking at, but again, the feedback we've gotten from most of the larger producers is they view the importance of MPP as that catastrophic floor, the $4. Some will buy... Some will buy up some coverage but are not looking to have high, higher levels of coverage under the program. So yes, I think rates need to be adjusted, especially under that, on that first 4 million pounds.
Thank you. Mr. Dykes, you mentioned forward contracting in your testimony for class 2, 3, and 4 milk. Can you provide insight as to the, the logic of excluding fluid milk from forward pricing and forward contracting? And why was this done and should we change that?
I think this was done in the last, in the last Farm Bill was excluding fluid milk from the, from the ability to forward contract. I think it should be changed. We should look at that. And we want to work with the national milk producers to, to come up with a solution to that issue. And we think it should be afforded to...
It's a voluntary program, right? I mean, people can decide whether they want a forward contract or not.
It's a voluntary program. It takes, takes two, takes two to make it work. It takes both a buyer and a seller. And it is not a effort to reduce the price. It's an effort to stabilize the price or put, bring predictability to the price and reduce the volatility. So that's why we're advocating it be extended to all four classes of milk, sir.
And, and farmers who forward contracted might have been helped through some of the fluctuations that we've been talking about here in, in recent times.
We believe that's been the case across agriculture. It, you know, it, it helps bring predictability to, to a price at some point in time in the future.
And you'd like to see class 2, 3, and 4. That program is working, in your opinion, and...
We think it is. And we also think that if it was made permanent, therefore, we'd take some additional uncertainty out of that because when you're, when you're contracting, as you get near the end of the Farm Bill, then you, then you got to, you got to have it renewed again before you know if it's going to be around or not.
Thank you. Mr. Mulhern, does the national milk producers agree that forward pricing should be available for fluid milk? Or are you looking at it? What's your position on that?
Mr. Goodlatte, we think that forward contracting has worked well in terms of class 2, 3, and 4. There are some issues with class 1. There are some challenges there. However, Michael and I have, this is an issue that we have discussed and, and our groups are going to sit down and discuss this. One of the challenges, just to your initial question, is, you know, class 3 and 4 are competitively determined prices. They are, they are determined in the marketplace for prices paid for milk going into cheese, butter, powder. Class 1 is calculated as a differential added to the, the higher of class 3 or 4 price on a monthly basis.
Let me cut you off because I've only got 30 seconds left. Just want to make 2 points.
Sorry.
One, I know there's a concern on the part of many dairy producers with regard to labor. And I just want you to know that I have and continue to work on, as chairman of the Judiciary Committee, a, an agricultural guest worker program, an H2A program that would include taking into account that dairy producers need workers throughout the year. And I think there are ways to help address that. And secondly, going back to our first comment about schools, I just want to say that I think one of the issues with the decrease of milk consumption is the issue of taste. And I think that we ought to, we ought to allow dairy producers and, and dairy processors to offer products in schools that meet that demand of young people who, I think, still like the taste of milk.
We agree.
Whole milk.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Your time is expired. Mr. Scott, five minutes.
Thank you very much. I think it's very, man, I think it's very important for us to continue this line of discussion about our children not getting whole milk, the fatty part of milk. That clearly is very helpful for them. You know, I have a, a study here that was published in the medical journal Circulation. And here's what it says. It says that children who have a higher intake of whole milk or 2% milk gain less weight. I mean, that alone, right there, ought to amen everything that my chairman and, and Democratic leaders said. Here's something else it said, that the research shows that the dairy fats found in milk, yogurt and cheese, helps protect against type 2 diabetes. So here we got this dilemma. One of the biggest issues facing us right now is obesity of our children. And especially because of how our society has changed. I often say they no longer go to the playground. We no longer have physical education as a requirement in schools. And so there's this deer getting fat. And here we have the golden product of milk with all these blessings. What can we do to get this message out and to come up with a procedure to do it? I love milk. And I got other people to enjoy milk, young people. Because as I would give my younger cousins and brothers and sisters milk, I would just tip into the sugar jar and put a little sugar in it. They loved it. Why, why can't we, if we did that, I think we would be doing a great blessing for our children. What do you guys say about that? I mean, you're out there in it. What can we do to get our young people to drinking more whole milk?
Shall I start, Michael?
Yeah. Thank you, sir. We would agree with that. And I would believe that the reason so many of us drink milk today is we drink milk in school.
That's right.
And we believe that setting that is the right thing to do. Also, if we have milk in school that doesn't taste good, as has been mentioned in this committee, we're not likely to drink it as we become adults.
Yeah, like I say, put a little sugar in it.
We totally agree with you. So one of the things that we're doing on the milk, on the processor side, is we have an education program that we're running and we're going to target, it's called Kids First. We're going to, we're going to explain and try to educate to both moms and kids and school nutrition folks the value of milk and the value of, of getting milk that tastes good that the kids will actually drink back into the school systems.
Are there any rules, both of you can comment on that, that need to be changed from our perspective here? We're rule makers, we're legislators, that, that's what we do. Is there something we can do?
Well, the major rule to be addressed is, is the regulations with the school meal program, where under the Healthy Hunger-Free Kids School Act, Congress passed legislation directing the, the milk served in school to be low-fat or non-fat. When those regulations were put into effect, for unflavored milk, schools can serve 1% or non-fat. Unflavored milk, which is about 70% of the milk consumed in schools, because of the very point you mentioned, Congressman, it, kids like the taste. On, on chocolate milk, it can only be non-fat. And that is not a good tasting product for many, for many people, especially if you drink 2% or whole milk at home. 2% is the leading milk consumed in the family home. You're getting a different milk served at school. No wonder kids don't quite like it. So turning that around, which the, the Child Nutrition Act had the provision in it to, to raise it to 1%, we'd like to get it to 2%. This has been a 50-year demonization of dairy fat, going back to the 1960s, late to 50s, 60s, actually more than 50 years if I do the math. And it is starting to turn around. The circulation article you mentioned is one of many, many research articles out there demonstrating the importance of dairy fat in the diet and its, its impact on things like type 2 diabetes, satiety. So it's beginning to turn. I think, I'm very heartened to hear this message from the committee. We need to do more and the Child Nutrition Act would be one place to start with that.
Thank you.
Your time is expired. Demister Gibbs, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to talk a little bit more about the small versus the large a little bit. And you talked about 175 cow dairies to include the 4 million pound production. I've been searching my, my brain, thinking in my neighborhood, we don't have any herds that size anymore. They're all 500 and they're still family farms.
Yep.
Okay? And they're still producing their own feed. Okay? Now my, I guess one of my questions is, obviously, when you talk about the larger farms and, and I don't count the 500 cow dairies the larger farms anymore. That's kind of the norm. Okay, so we're on the same page there. But you talk about the larger farms only wanting catastrophic coverage. And I think that's, goes on what I'm going to try to say here is, the larger farms, the, the big farms.
Right.
They're way over 500 cows. Is it true that probably most of them buy their feed? They don't produce their feed? Is that kind of the norm?
You're talking about the, the, the largest farms, 1,000 and more?
Yeah.
Yeah, you would find that most of the large farms buy a large percentage of their feed, grow some, but probably buy more than...
Yeah, but it, so, so here's, here's my contention. When you're talking to this margin price difference and, for the MPP, the larger farms, since we've seen it drop in commodity prices overall, so their feed cost has actually come down because the price of corn and all that's come down, where the smaller farms are producing their own feed, they have those fixed costs in land and equipment. And so they're, they're really losing money on that, that side of the operation, but their cost hasn't come down.
Right.
So I, I guess I just, Chairman, I just wanted to get this out because I think when you're talking about a differential here for a margin, you've got two things going on here. And I think that's evident why you see the larger farms going for, only wanting catastrophic coverage because their, their cost, their bottom line is actually lower, even, you know, obviously they pick up efficiencies, some efficiencies too.
Right.
But their feed cost. Now, if we were in a different dynamic where price of milk was in the basement, but price of corn and beans didn't drop, it's a different phenomenon would be happening.
And that was 2009. That was the situation in 2009.
Okay. So, so, so would you agree, whatever we're trying to do to figure this out, because I, it really triggered my mind here when Colin, ranking member, was talking about this. It's really critical when we're developing this program because you've got two things happening depending on the size of the farm.
Right.
And then, and I think it's important to keep in mind that 500 cow dairy farm is your norm now, at least in, in the Midwest.
Yep.
You know, maybe up there in, I don't know, Colin, in Minnesota and Wisconsin, maybe you still have the 1,500 cow dairies. I don't know. But I mean, all my 1,500 cow dairies are, they either went out of business or they're actually raising heifers for the bigger dairies now. And, and the, the bigger dairies are milking, they're 500 plus. Every one I, I just think of my, in my area, my 10-mile radius where I live, and I live in agricultural country.
Yep.
And so, so I, so I guess when you guys are developing this, I think that's important to keep in mind, you know, what's, what's really, really happening there. I guess another question, I just heard, I don't know if I heard it right, in the school lunch program, the milk. And I totally agree with you that in the family, at home, it's 2% milk. Okay, and you said that. So what are we serving in the schools?
So in schools for unflavored milk, schools can serve 1% or non-fat. For flavored milk, which is, which is the majority of milk served in schools today, it has to be non-fat only.
So is that like skim milk? I'm kind of...
I'm sorry?
That's skim milk?
Yeah, milk, yes. Exactly.
Oh, yeah?
And that's a problem. And that, we had, we had urged USDA to provide 1% flavored. And actually, our position in the rulemaking process was to have 1% and put a cap on the sugar amount, 22 grams of sugar, put that cap in, but keep it at 1% because kids like the taste of, of milk with 1% more.
Well, it's just common sense. If you're drinking, they're drinking 2% at home, and I used to, we used to drink, you know, regular milk, 3.5, I guess, and now it's 2%. I'm, I'm used to that. I like it. But I probably have a problem going down to skim milk, so the kids for sure. So I think that's an important point. You can't serve something in school that's like, this doesn't taste like I'm drinking at home, so.
Right.
Anyways, well, thanks for being here. Thanks, Chairman, you're back.
Chairman, you're back. Ms. Adams, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to the witnesses for your testimony. Mr. Mulhern, in the last Farm Bill, dairy producers and processors were significantly split on dairy policy. At, at the time, there was a proposal to manage milk supply and many in the industry had concerns with that as well. I know that this time around, we're not talking about the, that kind of approach, but can you discuss what you've done to build support across the industry for changes to the dairy program?
Sure. Great question. And the proposal that I'm presenting to the committee today is one that has come through an 18-month process of engagement on our part with our members across the country, talking to them about what is not working with the margin protection program. We looked at every single issue that we heard from, from the countryside on issues that were not working. And we tried to reflect as many of those as we could into a proposal that balances needs of the industry across the country. So what we're presenting to the committee does reflect the input and the views of dairy farmers from across the country in our membership. And we think we'll go a long ways to address the problems that we're seeing in the program today.
Okay, thank you. As you know, we have to operate within certain budget constraints as we begin to write the Farm Bill. Our districts and states have multiple priorities that need to be funded in, in this bill. For example, my district in North Carolina, the 12th District, is in desperate need of a strong nutrition title and the SNAP program remaining intact. So what are your thoughts about how to address the budget challenges as we move forward?
Well, the budget challenges are real and I, again, want to commend the position of this committee and the chairman and ranking member in their communication to the House Budget Committee earlier this month, that the focus for agriculture and for the next Farm Bill has to be, let's get the policy right and then address the cost of it. I can say for dairy, we're not looking to have an expensive program. We just want an effective safety net for those, those downtimes. In terms of the nutrition programs, those are very important to all of us in agriculture. I think it's a strong consensus view that this package of farm programs and nutrition programs together is critically important. And I will say, you know, for the dairy industry, for dairy farmers and dairy processors, we're well aware that folks utilizing the SNAP program spend a lot of those dollars on dairy products. Estimates that we've seen for, I think it was fiscal year '15, the latest numbers I've seen, were about $8.4 billion of the total SNAP expenditures went for dairy products. So these programs are important. They have a need and we want to see a balanced package. But we think the committee has it right. Let's get the program needs set and then have the budget to address those.
Great. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to yield, yield the rest of my time back.
General lady yields back. Let's go now to five, six, no, Trent. Roger Marshall. Dr. Marshall.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let me add with everyone else's conclusions here. I grew up, my grandfather would deliver milk twice a week to my family in great big containers like this. We would take the cream for the cereal and my dad would use it for the coffee. I didn't even know what, that there was anything but whole milk until decades later. Is it just that simple? Why is consumption going down in schools? You know, again, I went to school, we got two cartons of milk at 10:00 a.m., we got two milks at lunch, come home and had two glasses of milk for, for supper. Dr. Dykes, any, is it just that simple? It's just taste or is it, are schools just not offering it or what else is going on?
We think a lot of it is, is the options aren't offered in school. Some of it, some of it is taste as well. But we have an educational effort, and I think Jim mentioned it as well. Dairy products have been demonized for a long time on the, on the fat side. I think there's concerns on the obesity. However, if we think about the difference between two, one cup of 2% milk and one cup of 1% milk, we're talking 20 calories. So we, we just think we have an educational effort and we also have to expand the options. Our research says kids will drink the milk if it tastes good and we, and we make it available to them. So we, we think that's the next first step is to change the rules and expand the options.
I mean, I'm in a position, I'm supposed to know something about nutrition. Is there anything more nutritious for a drink than milk? I mean, you could talk about juices have enough different qualities. What's in second place?
I don't know what's in second, but I will say there, your, your premise is spot on. There is no more, no more nutritious drink you can have than milk. Milk is the number one source of nine nutrients in the diets of children, number one source. So kids who aren't drinking milk are, are getting shortfall in terms of their consumption of calcium, potassium, phosphorus, magnesium, vitamin A, vitamin D, and on. So it is critically important and it's, it is an issue, it's a challenge that we're dealing with. I don't know what would come in number two, but it's, it's going to drop off a long ways for milk.
You know, Kansas has the fastest growing dairy herd in the country and I don't understand how we can have food insecurity issues in Kansas. And I can't imagine what it would be like in other states where they don't have the abundance of, of grains and, and milk that we have. I just finished two weeks of town halls, nine town halls, and I was a little bit surprised as I went to southwest Kansas that healthcare was not the number one topic. It was the labor force.
Yes.
Um, and not unique to the dairy industry. Feedlots and slaughterhouses, all those types of things, packing plants, sorry, we don't say slaughterhouses anymore, packing plants. It's a big issue, and it's hard to, we have about 20,000 open jobs in Kansas right now. And even when there's been unemployment, we still have problems. And I just want to, is this unique to Kansas? Uh, Jim, you want to go first and just kind of describe what you're seeing from a workforce issues in your industry?
No, unfortunately Congressman, it's not unique to Kansas. It's a, it's a critical issue facing dairy farmers and frankly, all of agriculture all across the country. I will tell you from my conversations with our members, the single biggest limiting factor on their ability to, to grow is inadequate workforce. They can't find enough workers. And it's not a question of finding, you know, workers in the, in the local community, people who have grown up there. Our industry does rely upon an immigrant workforce. Uh, fully 51% of the employees on America's dairy farms are immigrant workers. Uh, those farms are producing about almost 80% of our total milk supply. Many of the workers we know are undocumented, so this is a critical issue. Um, getting immigration reform right, I was heartened to hear the comments from Mr. Goodlatte. We've been working with him and his staff for some time on this issue and are hopeful that we can get a workable system. Our members understand the importance of border security and enforcement and support that, but along with that has to come a system of legal status for workers on our farms so that we, they have an ability to have a legal permit to do work and to be able to move back and forth, and a system for the future as well. So we have a pathway to future workers.
And, and how is dairy different than some of the other agriculture? I think I'm stating the obvious here, but.
Well, and you're, it's a huge issue. H2A, the program that exists for, um, for agricultural workers, um, is a, is a program focused on seasonal temporary workers. Our jobs are anything but. Our jobs are, as the chairman said in his opening comments, 365, um, you know, we have, we're milking these cows' herds two and three times a day. So it's, in many farms, it's around the clock labor force. It is not, it's anything but seasonal, temporary. H2A does not work for us. We don't have a program for dairy workers in this country and never have had one.
And I would just add, these are good jobs. These jobs are paying 40, $60,000 a year that are going unfilled. Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I yield back.
Gentlemen, I yield back. Mr. Costa, recognize for five minutes.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, and it's appropriate that you and the ranking member pay tribute to Kiki de la Garza, who was a, a real force not only in American agriculture, but spent a lot of time in California where I got to know him, and certainly our thoughts and prayers and condolences go to his family. You know, it's nice to see the two of you at the same table. Uh, I remember times when that was not always the case. So, uh, maybe this bodes well for the, the farm bill, while both the, the ranking member and I have, uh, worked with all of you in the past and, uh, through a lot of variations of the last two farm bills, and so, uh, maybe this is a kumbaya moment. I might take issue with my, uh, friend from the Midwest about feed prices and differentials there. While we have the larger dairies in California, uh, clearly, uh, we have to, um, compete with feed prices all around the country, and, and California has about a 60-day feed supply out of 12 months. So in other words, we're importing about 10 months of our feed supply, um, if you want to average it that way. And so feed comes in from all over the country, Midwest and everywhere else, and we have to compete on, on those margins, which is, um, uh, one of the criticisms I've had, and I'm glad to hear you, I mean, the margin protection program just hasn't worked, in my view, and I think it's one of the things we've got to look at. We were talking about prices of fluid milk, and I would like to kind of drill down a little bit. What changes in milk pricing regulations would be needed to allow forward contracting for fluid milk?
I, I think we, we need to, what I propose is we need to sit down and talk to both the, uh, the farmers and the processors side to see if we can work that out. You know, as Jim, as Jim mentioned earlier, uh, fluid milk prices, uh, it's a complicated formula, but it basically is a, a price, uh, predicated on what class, the higher of class three or class four milk with some differentials added to it. So in my view, if we get people that buy and sell milk from each other every day, sitting around the table, I think we could find a way to make that happen, to bring some stability and predictability into price and remove some of the volatility.
Well, the predictability, and I mean, the, the, the whole dairy industry has been so volatile over the last, you know, 15 years, and, and the amount of equity that we've lost out of dairy farms across America has been significant.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Mulhern, you want to comment on, on how that might work?
Certainly, Congressman. I would agree with, with Michael, and we frankly support efforts to reduce volatility on both the producer and processor side, um, and, and recognize that partially in the past through the agreement on forward contracting on class two, three, and four. Uh, there are some issues around class one, forward contracting because of that, that settlement obligation of class one handlers into the producer payment pool. That, you know, the issue is, would it, would forward contracting reduce pay prices to producers? That's something we have to look at.
Changes in the FMMO, uh, pricing system?
Don't think it would. It would be required monitoring by the Federal Mark, Milk Market Administrator's Office to make sure that there is, um, information on those, on those, uh, forward contracts. But it's, it, we do have, as you noted, we do have forward contracting approved currently in place in the farm bill, um, and it does expire at the end of the current farm bill. Uh, at this point, we support extending that. We're going to talk, uh, with IDFA about this issue of forward contracting on class one.
What recommended changes do you think we ought to be looking at with the new farm bill? I mean, both the ranking member and I have worked with you folks for a long time and other members of the committee on some version of a supply-side management. We know what the problems with Canada as they've become very predatory. Uh, it's not a level playing field, in my view.
Right.
You want to, I've only got 54 seconds left. Be quick.
Uh, in terms of supply, supply management, if that's the, the, turn of the question, Congressman, we are not proposing any supply management features in this, um, in our farm bill proposal for the 2018, uh, discussions. Our focus is on improving margin protection program. Frankly, as Mr. Peterson mentioned, had we got the margin, the market stabilization program put in place in the 2014 farm bill, we've come where, come nowhere near even needing that over the last few years because of where we are in terms of, of the markets. Um, so our focus really is having that producer safety net on MPP.
Mr. Dykes, I want to shift the question because you and I spoke about your trip last week to Mexico, and I'm very concerned about the proposed conversation with the administration on, uh, restructuring NAFTA. Could you tell us the potential implications to the American dairy industry about our, one of our big trading partners?
Mexico is our number one export market, taking about one-fourth of our exports, which is a little, a little over $1 billion. We have developed an excellent partnership with, with Mexico. It's, uh, free market access. It's a win, seen as a win-win situation in both Mexico and the US. We had, uh, quite positive conversations last week with Secretary of Agriculture, with the Minister of Economy, and with the Undersecretary for the Minister of Foreign Affairs, a former Mexican Ambassador to the US. They want to see this program continue, and we'll be working with hopefully Secretary Perdue and, uh, Ambassador Lighthizer and this administration to make sure that we preserve that market access with Mexico during the NAFTA renegotiation.
Well, that's critical, and, Mr. Chairman, my time's expired, but I think it's important to note that, that depending upon how we approach retaliatory issues are, could take place by Mexico and Canada, uh, if we go down the wrong, wrong road on this thing, and the repercussions to Calif, American agriculture, let alone California agriculture, will be big.
That's why we wanted to make the trip to Mexico to visit with our number one customer.
Thank you.
Gentlemen, my time has expired. Now, recognize the gentleman from California, Mr. Mulhern, for five minutes of questioning.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, welcome, gentlemen. We love our dairy. So, uh, I did want to drill down though, um, on the, um, pending legislation Dairy Pride Act a little bit with you. So, um, the, uh, I, I love the acronyms of the, when they get named here, around here. Defending Against Imitations and Replacements of Yogurt, Milk, and Cheese to Promote Regular Intake of Dairy Every Day Act. That's a heck of an acronym. So, very creative. So, um, I just, you know, again, my, we, we know some of the conditions that dairy's been going through here with, uh, uh, good prices a couple of years ago, and then, um, you know, international factors on, on pushing down price and exports and, and all that. And at the same time, we're seeing, uh, pretty much, uh, record production in that window as well. So I'm, I'm kind of, you know, wondering the, the effort to, uh, crack down on products that are in the labeling process that are not directly from, uh, from a cow, from, um, dairy, you know, such as soy milk, almond milk, um, perhaps this is as a consumer protection. So I, I guess I'm, uh, a little mystified at, at the direction the Dairy Pride Act is going, because when we're talking about the non-dairy alternatives that people are looking at that are using the word milk, uh, we're talking about less than 10% of the entire market share, or a little under $2 billion in sales. So, uh, it really comes down to when, uh, consumers in the market, uh, looking at, uh, what type of a product they're going to be using to fill that, uh, that, uh, desire, that, uh, consumer choice. To me, it seems pretty clear that, uh, easily differentiated by what you're buying in the dairy case as a milk product from a cow or something like almond milk or one of the other alternatives too. So I guess I'll start with Mr. Dykes first on this, is that, uh, you know, for, where consumers do bother to read labels, do you think there really is a problem with differentiating between dairy milk and the other, other alternatives out there, almond milk and, and other types?
This is a very difficult issue for our membership. We have members on both sides of this issue. We have, uh, members that are bottling milk, uh, alternative milks, juice, water, tea. Uh, so it's a difficult issue. I go back to FDA labeling policy, and FDA labeling policy says that foods need to be labeled to be both truthful and not misleading. So far, FDA has, uh, not concluded these are misleading, and there've been court challenges, and the courts have not concluded that they've been misleading. It's been going on for quite some time, as you point out. Uh, it kind of tends to pit farmer against farmer when we think about almond farmers versus a dairy farmer, or soybean farmer versus a dairy farmer. So it's a very difficult issue for our membership. Uh, the beverage case is very competitive, as you, as you note. So, uh, we, we, we think this is probably an issue that needs to be resolved in the marketplace, is our position.
Yeah, okay. I, I understand. So, so you don't, would you look at that as a consumer protection issue? You think that's what's being pursued here, or is it more of a marketing deal?
Well, I, I think it's, I think it's trying to, to market to the consumers to what they want and what they'll drink, uh, you know, uh, offering choice, innovation in products, uh, adding milk proteins to water, so we increase the protein content is a, is a new innovative product for the dairy, for the case, for the beverage case. So it has some dairy stuff in it. It's not totally milk. It's a competitive, it's a competitive space. Uh, offering choice is the bedrock of what we are in competing and, competing in the marketplace.
Okay. So again, the, uh, it, it seems like, you know, you got people that have different needs too, if there's a lactose intolerance by some consumers.
Or they may be vegans, they may not want to, they may not want any animal products.
Yeah. So, um, I guess just the intervention with the piece of legislation, taking that word away from the alternatives of, of using the word milk, just seems like a, a step beyond, especially since you talk about the legal issues. It's been held, held up in court. It's pretty obvious on a container it says almond milk or the other types that, uh, I don't know. So your, your organization isn't really one way or the other on the Dairy Pride Bill, then?
We'd made some comments on it, but as I said, this is, this is a very difficult issue for our members, and, uh, uh, we, we, at this point in time, think this is probably best resolved in the marketplace. You know, I, I know the producers have a different view of that, and Jim has a different view, and, uh, but it, it's a tough issue for our membership.
Yeah, certainly. Okay. Well, I appreciate the sensitivity on that, and I yield back. Thank you.
Your time has expired. Uh, Mr. Bernard, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, gentlemen, thank you for being here. I appreciate your preparation, uh, your expertise as well, as well as your testimony. I apologize for being late. In regards to your testimony, uh, it seems that you want to incentivize dairy consumption through the Feeny program. With Feeny, though, it seems that that was designed with fruits and vegetables in mind. Uh, and I highlight that based on where I'm from, the Salinas Valley, uh, that has a lot of fruits and vegetables, uh, known as the salad bowl of the world, and it has one dairy farm, the Skoak Family Farms. And so my question to you is, by incorporating dairy into Feeny, what would the impact be on purchasing fruits and vegetables through Feeny?
I, I'll take that one. We've not looked at, we've not looked at that aspect of it. What, where we're coming from is Americans are, only one out of 10 are consuming the recommended three servings a day of dairy products. Uh, so that's been our comment about school cafeterias. That's our comment on SNAP. That's our comment on all these other programs, is increased consumption because milk is the most nutritious product we have, nine essential nutrients. So we're trying to get, uh, nutrient-rich products to consumers. So our, our thought is, and what we've observed, is the Feeny has worked well on fruit and vegetables. We think that could be expanded to, to include dairy, to make the same offerings available and the same incentive programs available to, to increase that number above one.
Understood. Understood. Mr. Mulhern, anything on that?
Mr. Bernard, I would just add, I, I think our goal would be to grow these programs, not to have them in competition.
Fair enough. Thank you. Appreciate that. Um, the, the dairy farm that I do have, the Skoak Family Farm, they, you know, they've taken a hit with the falling milk, milk prices, uh, what I know of them, but they've also done what a lot of people do in agriculture, and that's they pivoted. They pivoted to organic, uh, and that's actually helped them out quite a bit. And actually, I saw them the other day at, at the, at the, uh, food, food fair, food market, uh, and farmer's market, excuse me, and they were selling not just milk, but cheeses as well, is what they've pivoted to. And organic cheeses. And I know that that's what, right now, organic is about 10% of dairy sales. Do you see that growing as well? Do you see more people pivoting, more dairy farmers pivoting to organic?
You know, there hasn't been as much growth in dairy farmers moving toward organic as, as one might think. Um, certainly those who have made the, the, the shift, um, are growing their production. It's a, it's a difficult shift because of the three-year transition rules. It does present a barrier. And a lot of the members that I talked to consider it. Some have made the shift for mainly for economic reasons because the price of organic milk is, is so much higher than conventional milk. A lot of farmers, you know, aren't as interested in making that shift because they believe in what they're doing. They believe in the conventional production they're engaged in. So it, I think it's a mixed bag overall.
Fair enough.
Would the gentleman yield?
Of course.
Part of the problem is not only the issue of the three-year conversion, but also of being able to obtain a secure feed supply for your, your dairy cows. Because, I mean, once you convert, you've got to get organic feed, and you've got to be able to have that reliable over, you know, 12 months a year. Those cows got to be fed twice a day, and therein lies the other problem.
Understood. Thank you. Um, the third question I have. Mr. Mulhern, I completely appreciate, appreciate very much your discussion about immigration and immigration reform and how it affects, uh, not just the dairy product, but especially my, my growers on this, in the central coast when it comes to picking their fruits and vegetables. It's huge. It's a big issue. And I believe that we can have a two-track approach to this. One, as, uh, uh, Mr. Goodlatte said in regards to helping out the H2A program, but two, uh, my focus will also be making sure that there's enough room there to mechanize. And I was wondering if you could elaborate if possible on the efforts, uh, any sort, on the efforts when it comes to mechanization, any sort of research and development in that area when it comes to the dairy field?
Well, uh, my own personal view, um, is that if we don't resolve this issue pretty soon, you're going to see increased mechanization in dairy. You know, robots are, are, um, moving into dairy production now, robotic milking. They're expensive, but as they get, uh, as you get more of them into the marketplace, you know, the price point comes down. So, um, it's, it's really an issue of, you know, a cost balance, and farmers are going to make the rational decision like any other business person. But if we don't resolve this pretty soon, I think we're going to increase, you're going to see the increased mechanization, increased use of robotics. I think it's going to happen anyway, but the failure to have a stable labor supply is going to likely increase that. At higher cost though, in some respects.
Understood. Gentlemen, thank you. I yield back my time. Thank you.
Joe's time expired. Mr. Dunn, five minutes.
Chairman. For Mr. Mulhern, a question. So we know that the actual dairy production margin fails to reflect the actual farm profitability. It's a misnomer is, as we use it there, because it doesn't, it excludes a lot of the overhead cost of producing milk, the labor, capital, veterinary services, depreciation. So, and I know that some of these factors are very difficult to nail down. They're not readily available, numbers at a national level. Can Congress help the dairy farmers by including some of these production costs in that form more simply so that we would more accurately reflect the profitability or lack of profitability on the farms?
Well, it's a good question, Mr. Dunn. I would say that historically, looking back to the formation of this margin protection program, what we focused on was trying to address those variable costs, which is feed. And, you know, it's the largest component in, for most dairy farmers. In fact, in some areas of the country, 75% of your total cost are with feed. So it really is a focus in that program on the variable cost because they kind of go up and down. You don't have much control over what happens, you know, on feed costs. Fixed costs tend to be relatively, using the term, fixed over time. There is the issue which you mentioned of adequate data if you're going to try to put some of these things into a formula. The formula we have, one of the reasons, the factors we have in MPP are the ones we use because there is a price series that USDA reports on a monthly basis nationally for those figures. So something we could look at in terms of looking at other variables. But our focus has been on the, on feed because it is the largest variable cost of production.
So the margin, however, so we're using this as, we're ending up with a number that says, and here's the margin that this farm makes. And that is in no way, shape or form reflective of the margin that the actual farmer has.
And it is not an indication of profitability because, to your point, that margin is to cover all the fixed costs that you have. So it's if, when the margin is $5, that's not much, $5 per hundredweight, that's not much money to cover, you know, land, rents, labor and all the other capital costs you have in running a dairy operation.
Yeah, that's when a dairy operation becomes a beef cattle operation.
Good point.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. I yield back.
Gentlemen yields back. Al Lawson, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I apologize for being late and this question might have already been answered. But my concern is the Canadian dairy industry enjoys a supply management system that prevents the US from exporting any meaningful amount of dairy products into Canada. They are using new tools to restrict imports from the US. What is the US dairy industry doing to respond to these actions?
Go ahead. Mr. Lawson, this is a real issue and a real challenge for us. As we look at renegotiation of NAFTA, which is on the agenda now, you know, to Michael's comments earlier, we think things are working great in terms of the US relationship with Mexico when it comes to dairy and frankly, for much of agriculture. We do have real problems, to your question, with our relationship with Canada, where access is granted in one agreement and then they find a way to work around it. The ultra-filtered milk issue that Michael mentioned earlier and is in my testimony is one of the problems, where they're taking away, blocking our access to the market. We've been selling $150 million worth of ultra-filtered milk into Canada. They change the system to prevent that from coming in. The newest thing they're doing on this Class VII special ingredient class is going to price their skim milk powder because they have a surplus of it as a result of their program. They have a surplus, they're going to price it at the world level, which frankly is in contravention to their WTO obligations in our view. And this is an issue that we're going to ask the administration to focus on in the NAFTA negotiations. We need enforcement. We need the US to raise concerns with Canada with respect to dairy. Very pleased that Speaker Ryan did raise those concerns when he met with Prime Minister Trudeau about six weeks ago, a month ago, whenever that was. We do need this to be a focus of any discussions with Canada to stop the dairy industry there from doing, taking these steps that have negative impacts, not only on us, but this special ingredient Class VII will hurt dairy exporters all around the world.
I would add to that as well. I agree with everything Jim said. We've also written letters, both my organization, Jim's organization, to all the National Association and State Departments of Agriculture, US Dairy Export Council. We've written letters to this administration expressing our concern with this program. Also, letters have gone in from the EU, Australia, New Zealand, the US and Mexico, expressing concerns over what Canada is doing. In addition, I've also done two TV interviews with Canadian TV, expressing our concern over what's happening in Canada. So we're working jointly to try to address that issue.
If I just could add, we're also reaching out to governors along the border states to encourage them to engage in this issue as well.
Gentlemen yields back. Mr. Allen, five minutes.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for being here today. As far as the supply-demand issue that we're faced with, obviously farm income is down oh, some 55% over the last three years, dairy included. And, you know, we've talked about the pricing and how that relates, and of course, we're involved in a world, you know, world trade situation. It looks like that, from what I'm hearing, that Mexico is, that we're doing fine there. Canada is a problem. Where else in the world are we, like, in my region, we grow a lot of peanuts and we're in pecans and we're sending those to China. What are some of the other markets that we're dealing with that are maybe a problem that we need to address as far as the trade situation goes?
Mr. Allen?
Go ahead. I'll take that first. We have a great focus on developing markets in Asia. That was, while we were reluctant supporters of TPP because of, we didn't think the market access openings in dairy were as much as we wanted to see, the agreement had very strong improvements in other areas which led us to support it. But Japan is one of those markets where we'd like to see increased access. It's a very good market, but it could be better for us with more access. Asia, obviously because of the growth of the middle class, what we find is a growing middle class increase for demand for protein is very good for increased milk consumption. So I would say Asia is probably the number one target for us, but South America, Middle East, North Africa are all areas that we're looking at. But we're not doing so without competition. You know, we are competing with the European Union and New Zealand, Australia when we pursue those markets. That's why trade agreements are important for us and it's why, it's frankly, it's one of the reasons we need the MPP program because of the competition we're facing. They have some ability to influence milk price within the EU, for example, that we simply don't have. They can sell their exports at a lower price. We've got to compete with that in the world market. So it is a challenge for us.
And, go ahead.
I was just going to add, the Asia-Pacific region, as Jim mentioned, the countries that were involved in TPP, that's a tremendous growth area for us. China, India, Japan, that market's expected to double between now and 2050. So we need to get our policies in place so that US dairy is able to compete in that marketplace.
Right. And that's obviously one way that we can help you as far as dealing with consumption because as I read here, production is down like 32% as far as from its 2014 high. And of course, we talked about the margin protection program and its current structure, you know, paid out very little as far as that's concerned. And again, on the MPP, producers seem dissatisfied in its current state. And is, you're certain that the MPP adjustments you suggest can make this program to an effective safety net for our dairy producers?
Yeah, we're confident of that, Mr. Allen. We have taken feedback from producers across the country and the recommendations we're making to the committee for improvement in the program will address those problems. It is, the problem with the program is one of integrity and cost for a producer. Integrity because the monthly or bimonthly margin reported under the program today does not accurately reflect the cost that dairy farmers are facing. And the cost issue is one of making those rates a little bit more affordable to encourage higher levels of supplemental coverage. We address those issues and the other more technical aspects of our proposal and we think we'll have a program that will meet the needs for the dairy industry, the dairy community for the long term.
Okay. Good. Thank you. And I'm just about out of time. I yield back.
Gentlemen yields back. Ms. Custer, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you for holding this hearing. It's an important issue in my district in New Hampshire where we lost almost 10% of our dairy farms this past year. We saw 19 dairy farms go out of commercial business in 2016 alone. So we had sort of a perfect storm between the low milk prices, the international market instability, and then a severe drought that hit my district last year and causing a record number of dairies to close their doors, their barn doors. But part of the problem was that the margin protection program, as we're discussing today, simply was not helpful. We held an emergency meeting with our New Hampshire dairy farmers and learned that it just hadn't worked for virtually any of them. They had paid in with premiums but had not received the benefits. Our dairy industry generates $141 million in economic activity, which is a lot for our state, and 3,500 jobs, which is significant. Just to give you the scale, I only have one or two employers in my district of that size. And so this is the equivalent of really a major international company coming to our district. $10 million in labor income, so, I'm sorry, 19 million. So my fear is that if we don't make significant policy changes, we're going to risk losing all of the dairy farms. And I want to direct my first question for Mr. Mulhern. You've discussed this during this hearing, I apologize I had to come late, but I'm wondering, what do we say to the farmers and how do we fix the program to convince them to try it again, to come into it again next time around? I'm concerned that they'll simply walk away from it. And number one, how can we help? And number two, how can we convince them that it will work the next time around?
It's a great question. It's one we're focused on. I would say first that the concerns that you expressed, both from your constituents and your own, and the situation in New Hampshire is not unlike the same message I hear from dairy farmers across the country. The program hasn't worked as intended. The fixes that we're proposing will do that. But it's going to take time to get people back into the program. It's the combination of things. So first, we need to get the feed cost adjustment right. Demonstrate that we understand the current formula is not working. It's not working because of cuts that were made arbitrarily in the budget cutting process while the committee was deliberating on the previous farm bill. We get that right, but then that's another reason to look at those rates. The other concern I've heard from producers is the cost of coverage is not affordable. And so adjusting those premium rates to make it more affordable, to encourage higher levels of buy-up coverage will go a long ways to convincing producers that these changes are real and that they'll be helpful. Frankly, all it's going to take is one year of the program working for people to realize it's the safety net that we wanted and needed. And we hope it doesn't come to that, but once we get people back in, they will see that these changes will make the program the safety net that we've all wanted.
So, and thank you. And my focus is on the higher feed costs. We're literally at the end of the road here in terms of US and the transportation and labor costs associated with bringing the feed to New Hampshire is very high. How can the MPP better incorporate these increased costs? What's the, do you have a formula in mind that would take into account those regional differences and how would you help New England farmers?
Yeah, so that's one of the changes that the adjustments in the feed formula that we're recommending will help address. For example, right now, the soybean meal formula, which is a big part of the index, soybean meal is at large cost and a major component of a dairy ration. We use one central basing point in Decatur, Illinois, reported by the Agricultural Marketing Service of USDA. There are frankly, a number of basing points around the country that have reported. So it would be more accurate to take all those basing points and average those into the index because it is a national index. And by doing that, adjusting on the corn price as well, moving from NAS to AMS, both of those changes will help reflect the true cost, the actual cost to producers are paying. I will say, in terms of this regional issue, which your question gets at, we've looked at it very, very closely. And in the analysis that we've done, the reality is that while the cost of production and the margin is different in every part of the country, keep in mind that the MPP is a national index. It's the average US milk price, the average feed cost. And we have looked at regional feed cost, regional milk prices, and what you find is they move in tandem. There's a spread, but they move in tandem. And so the correlation between the MPP index and any regional index is almost perfect. It's .98, which is almost perfect correlation. So this index does reflect the true cost that farmers are facing. And we don't need to have a regional program because of the accuracy of the formula that goes into MPP.
That's very helpful. Thank you very much. I yield back.
Gentlemen, time has expired. John Fazzo, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I would associate myself with the questions of Ms. Custer just now. Being in the Northeast as well, my dairy farmers in the Hudson Valley and Catskills and Central New York are feeling this very acutely and they believe that some type of regional variation might be useful for them. And I'd like to explore that further with you after this hearing. And also, you, Dr. Dykes, you had mentioned the letters that you had sent, you and Mr. Mulhern jointly relating to the Canada issue. And that's one that also has raised concern for dairy farmers in New York State. And I'd appreciate if you could make that available to members of the committee and to me.
We'll do that.
Those correspondents. What is the precise regulatory change or device that the Canadians are using to exclude certain US products from that nation? Can you explain that in more detail?
I'm going to try to. You can talk that one. So there are two changes that are underway. One has to do with the ultra-filtered milk. And we have been, for the last several years, a fair, quite a bit of ultra-filtered milk, which is basically farm milk that is put through a filtering process to concentrate it some. It's a higher protein, higher solids product shipped into Canada and used in cheese manufacturing. Canada has changed the pricing structure to discourage cheesemakers in Canada from purchasing ultra-filtered milk from the US. That's one problem. That's the loss.
How precisely do they do that when you say they changed the pricing mechanism?
So Canada has a very highly regulated milk pricing system. If you think US milk prices are highly regulated, you've seen nothing until you've seen Canada's. And it's a supply management system. So with that supply management, farmers are limited in the amount of milk they can produce for the market. It is pretty much a closed market. Under WTO obligations, there's been some opening, that's ultra-filtered milk, we've been able to ship in there as a result of WTO agreements. The change being made is within the pricing structure. So they'll have, they will sell milk to cheesemakers at a lower price, which will make the milk they've been buying from the US, this ultra-filtered milk, non-competitive, uneconomic. A similar change, different but similar in concept with this new special ingredient Class VII, which is a provincial change. It now is, was put in place, I believe, in Ontario first and maybe adopted across Canada. Will price skim milk powder at the world price and, which really is not consistent with Canada's overall supply management system.
So on that point, how does a change effectuated by a province within Canada comply with WTO and NAFTA obligations since we made these agreements with the nation of Canada, not with a province of Canada? And wouldn't those type changes done at the regional level within Canada run afoul of NAFTA and WTO standards?
We think it does. And we think it is in contravention to Canada's NAFTA obligations and that is a case that we're discussing with the administration and hope that they will push that issue.
And we also, they are also expanding that from the one province across all the provinces as well. So it's going to become a nationwide issue if it isn't already.
Yeah, it would seem quite troublesome that if a state government in New York, in the United States, were acting similarly, it would seem to be against international agreements that we have signed. And so I'd like to explore those issues further with you and for the members, the benefit of the committee, I think it's important that we address it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I yield back.
Gentlemen yields back. I'd also like to get on the record the fact that Canada misgrades our wheat going north, that they automatically downgrade the quality of our wheat just arbitrarily, capriciously. We've raised that issue with them often. Mr. Davis, five minutes.
Thank you. I don't have nothing to yell at the Canadians about. As a matter of fact, I think some Canadians just walked in the door. You missed some great debate on trade. It's Mr. Dykes, Dr. Dykes, I'm glad you have a. I'm glad you have a lid on that water.
Yeah, so I don't spill it this time.
It was a great first meeting a few years ago.
Yes, it was, sir.
I actually have a question for you, sir. Your group has asked the FDA to extend the new nutrition facts and serving size deadline from July of next year until July of 2021, which would save the industry billions by synchronizing those changes with the USDA's GMO labeling scheme? Why has FDA not agreed to extend that deadline yet?
We're not exactly clear on why they haven't done that yet. It's a significant issue for the entire food and beverage industry. When you think about 700,000 products to be labeled, if we look at where we are currently, we do, one would be required July 26 of '18, and then the GMO disclosure would target to be completed by July 29, 2018. So we'd have three days, we'd turn around and do it all again. We think we need more time. We're not opposed to doing it. We just need more time. We've asked for that to be extended to May 2021, thinking then, by the time the GMO disclosure rule is finalized and there's an implementation phase of that, we'll be able to sync the two up so that the industry can only label once. I have members that have estimated that this will cost them individually, as one company, $35 million. I have another one that's estimated 17 to 18 million. So to think about doing that twice is just totally cost prohibitive.
Well, thank you. And let us know how we can, or let me know how I can advocate on your behalf with the FDA. That's just too cost prohibitive for many of our companies and many of your producers that will eventually be a cost to our consumers.
In fairness to Mr. Secretary Price, we just sent a letter to him. So we'll ask for a meeting and ask for a deeper understanding of where they are. And hopefully, they will see the compelling argument we're making.
I'll text him, tell him to speed it up when we're done here, okay?
Thank you.
No, I appreciate your comments and very timely. And I actually appreciate the comments on the school nutrition program. This is an issue that I've talked about in this committee for the four years that I've been here. You know, we want to increase the amounts of healthy foods that are served in our school cafeterias. We want more fruits and we want more vegetables. But I also agree that we have to serve products that not only taste good, where sometimes we've seen limitations, as the debate has shown here clearly today, that when we were growing up, the 2% chocolate milk was much preferred to a non-fat chocolate milk that I would call chocolate water.
Yes.
I may like the taste of it, but you know, and the cafeteria workers know, when those go in the trash, that's not a good use of funds for the school district or for the program. And it's not achieving the goals that we need. But it's cost. Cost is the main driver for so many of my school districts who are underfunded in Central Illinois right now, to where they are spending so much more on their school nutrition program. And we can have more new innovative products. But until the federal government allows them the flexibility to be able to serve what's healthy and what is going to be consumed by their students, I feel that we have a long way to go. One question for you, Mr. Mulhern. Is yogurt treated the same way as milk in the school nutrition program?
Yogurt is not treated the same way as milk.
Why not?
Well, milk is a, one of the required components on the list of foods, offer versus serve, is that, you know, it used to be milk was required with each meal. Offer versus serve, it is offered with each meal. We have worked to increase yogurt offerings in school. Expansion of the school breakfast program has been very good for increasing yogurt consumption. We've tried to work with the local school food officials to get more smoothie bars into schools, and not just salad bars, but smoothie machines. In fact, the checkoff program has worked to even provide some machines to schools. So it's an area we're working on. There has been some improvement in yogurt positioned as a protein component, but more could be done there.
Well, thank you. And I just want to commend both of you. I know during the last farm bill, it seemed that your two organizations may not have had such an amicable relationship. And it seems to me that you're all working well together here as we move into the next one. So, Mr. Chairman, I yield back. Thank you.
Jim, you're back. Mr. Thompson, five minutes.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you both, you gentlemen, too, for your organizations and your leadership. Greatly appreciated. I want to thank you both for being here today and testifying before the committee. Additionally, I would like to thank you both for working with me and your organizations on my School Milk Nutrition Act, and in an effort to get nutrition and flavor introduced back into the school. Sounds like I got a bunch of co-sponsors in this committee. The way they're all talking, the need to take action on that, and the only thing I could think of is I could drink to that, you know, as long as it's a good glass of cold milk. Mr. Mulhern, I want to start, as you mentioned in your testimony, dairy farmers are struggling. You know, we've heard a lot of questioning on that in terms of the margin protection program that needs some reform. And I appreciate all the work that you've done to develop recommendations to make the MPPs a more effective risk management tool for dairy farmers. And while we don't know yet what the budget situation is going to be, I'm very interested in focusing our efforts on the areas that will best improve the program. One idea I frequently hear about is the need to reform the feed size of the program. We've heard that today, commented on. With that in mind, can you talk a bit more about the feed formula that you all developed? And additionally, can you walk us through the proposed changes to corn and soybean price points?
Sure. First of all, Congressman, let me commend you for your leadership on the school nutrition issue. Your leadership with the language to change provisions in the child nutrition bill on school milk have been very, very important. And I was remiss in not indicating that in my earlier comments. We very much appreciate all your work on that. In terms of the changes we're recommending in the feed formula, in some, they're designed to reflect the true cost of feed that dairy farmers experience on the farm. I've talked about the 10% cut that was made to the overall formula as part of the deficit reduction process in the last farm bill. That needs to be restored. The other changes really are designed to make sure that we're getting accurate pricing on the components of, there's really three components to the feed calculator. It is corn price, soybean meal, and alfalfa. On the soybean meal price, as I mentioned in earlier comments, rather than use one basing point, because there are transportation differentials around the country, so different cost, we should be averaging the cost of soybean meal at different points in the country. That'll get a more accurate reflection of the national cost to dairy farmers on soybean meal. On corn, similar change is to move from, the current index uses the prices received by a corn farmer for sale of corn. That is not always the price paid by a dairy farmer. So we want to move from prices received, a NASS index, to the AMS prices paid index, which really is going to be more accurate of what a dairy farmer is actually paying for corn. Because a price received could be shipment of large amount of corn to a grain elevator may not reflect what a dairy farmer is having to pay for feed. On the alfalfa side, it's a little bit more complicated, because there are a lot of ranges in quality of alfalfa. Hey, dairy farmers tend to feed, do feed higher quality alfalfa, which costs more than some of the lower grades. We're trying to capture that if we can, so that this index really does truly accurately reflect the cost to a dairy farmer of feeding a dairy cow. In some, we make those changes, and we'll have a much more accurate index going forward.
Thank you. And when it comes to dairy policy, obviously, there's so many different approaches to make sure that we maintain dairy security, which is good for Americans, nutritious, but obviously making sure we're taking care of our farm families who are working so hard. And part of that is in this committee, part of it is like the school nutrition program, where I'm a senior member of the education workforce is there. But another one, Dr. Dykes, that falls under that jurisdiction is with the WIC program. And so I just wanted to touch base. Your testimony says that USDA regulations limit milk purchasing options under the WIC program, or infant children. Very important program.
Yes.
We were first married, my wife and I, we had our first child. We were WIC eligible. We use those opportunities to be able to purchase nutritional food for my wife and for our newborn son, you know, 30 years ago. What are the limitations with WIC?
Thank you, sir. The latest changes were eliminating the 2% milk option out of the WIC program. And what we are hearing anecdotally is that some of the WIC directors are saying in public meetings that WIC participants are now using SNAP dollars to purchase their 2% milk, because they're accustomed to drinking 2% milk. I also think there was, in Texas, with the 2% change, the change from 2% to only 1%, resulted in a 17% drop in milk consumption. Mr. Conaway may have had more on that during some of his extensive hearings on SNAP. But it comes back, I think, Mr. Thompson, to the kind of the overall conversation we've had here today, whether it be school lunch program, whether it be SNAP, whether it be WIC. We need to think about the nutrition value of milk and endeavoring to make sure that we move that number from only one out of 10 Americans consuming the recommended three servings a day, and we need to work to increase that.
Yeah, we certainly need a policy that's driven by science, specifically food and ag science, and not by what it seems like political correctness.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Chairman. Time has expired. Mr. Arrington, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you, Mr. Mulhern and Dr. Dykes, for being here. We love our dairy farmers in West Texas, and they're a big part of our economy. In fact, over the last, I don't know if it's a decade or two decades, there's been a tremendous migration of dairy operations from around the country to West Texas. I don't know, something about West Texas is the greatest place in the world to live, something like that. I'm sure the chairman could give me a big amen on that. And we just, you know, we want to make sure, and it's not just our economy. I mean, I grew up in Plainview, and the Bauma family and other families that are producers are, they contribute a lot to our communities and invest a lot in our communities.
Yes.
So these God-fearing, freedom-loving Americans, we need to make sure that they have the same risk management tools as every other farmer, and that there's a responsible and effective safety net. So I join my colleagues and our fearless leader and chairman in making sure that that's the outcome. A couple of more controversial issues when I'm talking about agriculture and dairy farmers is immigration and then the renewable fuel standards, because I also represent a lot of corn producers. Let's start with immigration. I don't think there's tension here. I think that our dairy producers support legal immigration, and they want to stop illegal immigration like most Americans.
Right.
But we know that there's a shortage in labor force. And so they need this mechanism of work visas. So tell me, help me be very specific on what we can do to fix the problems of legal immigration to supply labor where Americans won't do the jobs.
Mr. Arrington, I'll take that question. And I agree completely with your assessment of the situation with respect to our members and the need for a stable, reliable workforce. The key in our view is while policy proceeds along with a focus on border security and enforcement, that we have to have a system providing legal status for farm workers. So we would support providing a program where farm workers have a permit that is for an extended period of time, three years, five years. And we're going to need a system for the future as well, because it isn't enough to fix the problem for today. We don't want to back into the same problem in 10 or 15 years. So the types of jobs in agriculture that immigrant labor is filling are very good jobs. They're challenging jobs. And we've had a hard time getting employees for those jobs on dairy farms. Make no bones about that. So we do need this system, and we need to have a legal status for those workers. It can be, you know, along with an E-verify system, as long as we have some legal status for those workers, that can all be worked out. We are working with the Judiciary Committee, and that will be with Mr. Goodlatte as chairman of that, and he's been a great leader on the issue. We're hoping that through this process, that we can have not only secure borders and enforcement of existing immigration laws, but legal status for workers who are here.
Yes, I don't see the two as mutually exclusive. I'm for border security. I'm for preventing illegal immigration. I'm for rule of law, and staunchly so. But there's got to be a way to fix a legal process to support our dairy farmers and our producers across the board.
I agree.
What are some reasonable ways that producers could help prevent illegal immigration? I'm just throwing that out there. I mean, I don't want them to be de facto immigration enforcement officers, but what are some ways they can help in that process?
I think it comes back to having options. You have to have options to have a legal workforce. And that really is the problem. I will tell you that, you know, farmers today, some know that they have workers with either undocumented or questionable papers. And there is concern about what may happen with that workforce. Those cows need to be milked at least twice a day, seven days a week. So this is a real and pressing issue for our members. We hope it can be resolved as quickly as possible.
I won't get to RFS, so I'm going to yield back to the chairman. Thank you.
Time has expired. Mr. Comer, five minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Dr. Dykes, it's an honor to have you here today. I have to say this about Dr. Dykes. He was born and raised in my congressional district, from a very good family.
Thank you, sir.
In fact, I took a picture of you sitting here and texted it to your brother, and he told me to drill you hard, and it got my turn.
Don't listen to those guys.
But both those guys are good, hard workers there in Adair County, and I appreciate them. And I appreciate all that you do and will continue to do to help rural dairy farmers in Kentucky. I know you're passionate about that, and I appreciate your work with that.
I am, sir.
What's the current status of the dairy export market? And the reason I ask, we've got a big dairy processor around home that dries milk and sells it to craft, all these food processors all across the world. But they constantly have trouble getting in the China market. And I was just curious, what's the status of the dairy export market right now?
Exports for dairy have been a relatively recent thing, the last 10, 12 years or so. We've gone from exporting about 5% of our milk production to about 15% of our milk production in the last few years. That's roughly about one day a week of milking is exported. Mexico is the number one market with a fourth. But if we look at the increase in milk production in the last few years, about half of our increased milk production has gone to exports. So I give you those kind of numbers for context. Exports is a big part of where we are with U.S. dairy production today, and it will be a bigger part of where we go with U.S. dairy production in the future. We think our dairy farmers have everything they need to compete. We have the natural resources. We have the standards. We have the distribution. We can do those kinds of things. And we've got to work to make sure we have a level playing field. And that's why these trade agreements become so important for dairy. And that's why a fix in Canada as a part of the NAFTA renegotiation is important. That's why preserving what we have currently with Mexico, where 1/4, $1.2 billion of dairy goes to Mexico every year. That's why preserving Mexico, fixing Canada, gaining market access in Asia-Pacific around the world is extremely important.
Right. What, you know, Kentucky's no different than any other state. Listening to my colleagues ask questions about the status of the dairy industry, we've lost a lot of dairies.
Yes, we have.
And when I talk to dairy farmers, they're always unhappy with the formula. And I'm always thinking in the back of my mind, would dairy not be better off without a formula, without price support, without the government involvement, like beef and pork and poultry? I know, that's a tough question.
We make a different answers from the two of us.
Right.
That is a tough question, and Jim will want to talk about that. You know, it is a very tough one. How do we think about that? And how do we think about the future of dairy? When I was a kid growing up in Adair County, every single neighbor milked cows.
That's right.
And the last couple of times I went home, the last neighbor sold the dairy cows.
There's one listed in the Farmer's Pride. Seems like every month, another dairy going out of business in Adair County, which is the second biggest dairy county in the state.
Yes. And it just, I mean, it hurts when you see that happen. Having been a practicing veterinarian, I watched them sell herds as well, and it hurts. It also hurts, though, when you see them just work so hard. And when you, I used to tell my clients, when you sell And when you, I used to tell my clients, when you're selling cows to pay the feed bill, you and I could calculate how much longer you're going to be milking here. And, you know, you got to think about what are your other options are out there for you. So it is a very tough, it's a very tough question. That's why I'm pleased to work collaborative with Jim. He's a, I've known Jim for 20 years, worked with the national milk producers, to think about where are we going to be in the out years with this thing called dairy, and what are the things we can do today that'll maybe make it better for some of the younger people that are coming in and trying to make, trying to make a living and make a business out of milking cows and processing milk.
If I could, Mr. Comer, I would say, would point out that we've made tremendous progress in evolving dairy programs in this country over the last, well, the last 10, 15 years. And it has been an evolution. We don't have the kind of intervention in the marketplace that we used to have. What dairy farmers today need is a safety net. To deal with those situations, we can't control. You know, we couldn't control Russia invading Crimea and then the U.S. and the EU responding to that, and Russia stopping importing dairy products from the EU, so the EU has to move those products into the world markets. We couldn't control China overbuying in 2014 and then pulling out of the world market in 2015 and having prices collapse. It's, we're at, we now are exposed to these world markets, and they are, they're difficult. It's a challenging time. The MPP is a safety net program. We don't want to intervention in the marketplace, but we do need support because unlike beef and pork, you know, we're harvesting every single day. Dairy farmers are price takers. We give it to market provides. And so that, that kind of, the situation we face does require, does mandate the need for some sort of safety net to help deal with those highs and lows.
That's one of the other reasons, another part of that answer is, so what's one of the incremental ways that we do that? That's one of the reasons we're asking to expand forward contracting for Class II, III, and IV, make that permanent, and expand it to include Class I milk, and we'll work with Jim at National Milk on that. But it's to help take some of the volatility out of that and to put, put some predictability around a price at a future point in time. And I think back to my brothers in Adair County, our cattle, our beef cattle are sold before they ever leave the farm, and they've been sold for several months before. Sometimes we're on a good side of that, and sometimes we're not. But at least we know where we're going to be down the road, and we can lock in a profit on those things.
Thank you.
Chairman, time has expired. Thank our witnesses for being here today. It's been a very productive hearing. I, too, want to add my thanks for the pairing, the emerging partnership between some competing folks that in the past have maybe not seen as close to eye to eye as we can. I hope the rest of production agriculture can see your example and as we walk this hard path. This committee is deeply committed to trying to address and fix the problem that's emerged out of the 14 Farm Bill with the market protection program. How we go about that, we want you at the table. We, I know you want to be at the table. You will be. As I mentioned in my comments earlier, I don't want expectations to outrun what we can actually get done, but Colin and I and the rest of this committee, as you've heard from our comments today, are deeply committed to make that happen. And I appreciate you working together to work on risk management tools. These aren't revenue sources. These are risk management tools that allow, with the crop insurance or this one, allow the farmers to know where their risks are and to hedge, in effect, against that. We want this tool to work. It has not worked. Deeply troubled by CBO scoring of what appears to be a relatively straightforward change to the program that was originally intended to be there. We'll continue to work on all this. So, under the rules of committee, today's hearing will remain open for 10 calendar days to receive additional material, supplementary written responses from the witnesses to any question posed by a member. This hearing of the Committee of Agriculture is adjourned. Thank you.